Hold on, hold on, we got 6:29.
Yeah, I gotta turn off my... Yeah, everyone vibrate.
Oh, do you want me to say this? Call to order, pledge allegiance.
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can you take your roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Eastick.
Present.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Mr. Ryder.
Here.
Mr. Jennings.
I need a motion to elect the officers for ballots of 2013.
I would like to nominate Kirk Jennings for president.
Second.
And I would like to move that motion to be pledged. To nominate Kirk.
My second is a burden.
I have... Oh, damn it. Okay.
Take a lie detector.
Take a roll on that?
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings.
I have a statement. Can I get a motion for the office of vice president? I will nominate John Ryder.
My second.
That's what you get in push-ups.
Need discussion or roll? Let's get a roll on that.
I am listening.
Goodbye, Tom.
We have a motion to close that.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Why don't we make a motion to close that? We need a motion to close the first one. I'm just asking. Do I read this thing?
That's you.
I would like to approve the appointment of Richard Hendricks to serve as the board member through December 31st, 2015. This is to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of board member Doug Jones. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Who's Richard Hendricks?
I would say...
I'm gonna guess it's one of the four people.
That's him!
Stand up, Richard.
I will say that having been involved with the nine candidates that expressed tremendous interest, all of them were quite dedicated and enthused to have a chance. We then narrowed down, after ten minutes of speaking with each, which wasn't enough, I know, but we had to limit it, we narrowed down to a smaller pool of what we thought were the four most likely candidates. And then the three of us, John was ill at the time, unfortunately, we spent a half hour more with each of the three, or each of the four candidates, and we really looked at all the qualities, attributes, everything that they would bring to the board for the next two years. And quite honestly, you could throw a dart at any of the four names and we would've done well for the district. And quite honestly, any of the other nine, or the five that weren't invited back would not have done bad for the district. So, at the end of that process, it just came down to having to make a decision. And the selection of Mr. Hendricks by no means is a negative mark on the other three. There's no need to give you the names of the other three. They came close, they knew who they are. But based on this, I would like to welcome Mr. Hendricks to help serve us for the next two years, four months.
Thank you.
Now, we have to actually vote on it, so you can't say thank you.
Okay.
If you want to add, I think one of the hardest decisions the board had to make, especially when you get to the final four, I don't want to do like a basketball thing, but I mean, it was really, the final four was extremely difficult.
Well, you know what? The hard part of calling everybody, and I don't know why you guys didn't step up and vote.
Because you're the president.
Vice president.
Zudo.
You never want to deliver... And it's not bad news if it's... Of course, it's not life and death news.
Death news.
But you don't want to deliver that news. And everyone I talked to was very conciliatory and appreciative of our process. They didn't even think they'd get a chance to talk. And the second level process, they loved the opportunity to talk more. So, I think that might be a good precedence if we ever have to do this process.
And add one last thing. I think not only the four, but the eleven that were present, all eleven of them, and I think you sort of touched on them, it shows, the whole group shows the passion that's still in the district. You know, all of them were dynamic, the last four were exceptional, but I mean, all of them were dynamic and all of them probably could've done a good job. But to have that much passion, the district shows that the district is alive. And most importantly, we're growing, we're not shrinking. Where, you know, and for a while, we were curious, but the tree's grown again and full steam ahead.
Kirk, eleven, you have to remember these in Poland.
That's right. Careful those kids with the ball. One, two, three, four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven. And just one last comment, just to point out, just to give you a little insight of what happened in our interview sessions. We definitely gave them a chance to talk about why they're enthused about being on the board, but we actually asked them to criticize what they knew of the current board, the last five or six years of activities. And it sounded like, pretty much across the board, us are forgetting something. Across the board, everyone said they just wanted to be part of the momentum that they've seen really starting to take hold. That's not because of the board, I think in large part, Mino and the board have collectively worked and jammed to focus on the numerics of our budgets. The combination of everything we've done, I think everyone wanted to be part of it. So, that was encouraged. So, with that, I close the discussion.
Okay.
Roll, please.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings.
Yes. So, with that ritual, we need to swear you in. And then you will sit upon the infamous board table.
Actually, you guys have to, yeah, that's me, but you have to get sworn into. Because you're president and vice president.
Wait, all three of us have to?
I'm doing it on all three at one time.
All three?
All you have to do is listen to the talk.
It's not I do this time, but I will.
You save a little bit of money here.
Just want to be honest with you.
I'm sure my husband wouldn't mind it all.
I didn't have an age of use, I don't know.
Do you, Kirk Jennings, John Ryder, and Richard Hendricks, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president, vice president, and board member and enforce the law in the exonerated filis school district, Columbia County, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be inactive during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified.
Welcome to the board.
What you want that for that for you?
Vice president? You actually did take the tie off, that was good. President? Superintendent? Yeah. Does my house, is my house, is it worth more now?
I'm president.
I could have ELP on my license plate. Alright. So, I think we pass it on to Jen now.
Now, you gotta approve the minutes.
President! I'm sorry, it's been so long. I take a motion to approve the minutes of last regular meeting on July 25th and the August 1st special meeting. What are the motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Michelle. Jen, call roll, please.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder.
I want to be around first.
Mr. Hendricks.
I'm standing.
Mr. Jennings.
Yes. We talked about... Alright, now let's move to number seven, the treasures report. Jen, you've got a whole bill of items, go ahead.
Okay. Attached in the treasures report is Bill's council cables, as well as board reports. The donations that we received last month were $145 from the Italian American Club for the football supplemental fund, and the following were from the Legion, $250 for football t-shirts, $200 for eighth grade cheerleader warmups, $200 for golf t-shirts. And the donations from the VFW in Washingtonville were $250 for the football supplemental fund and $100 for the golf team supplemental fund. And we're going to approve Shake Lee once again as our workers' comp and TBA for unemployment for $490, which is actually savings from last year.
Is it same thing?
Same thing, just cheaper price. They're waiting for lower their price.
Good deal. Now, the motion for seven, eight, and D?
Motion.
Hey, Jen, real quick question, and I know you've been with for years now, but are these numbers the same? Do we start to collect the same amount of donations? Are we getting more?
We seem to be getting more.
I thought so.
Yeah. You got twelve, almost $1,200 on the table right here between those two, so hats off to both.
Is it unsolicited, or do we have an effort that can't wait for needs?
Well, usually with the clubs, we have to actually request donations from them because that's the way that they do it. So, as long as, and they like to give to us, they have told Mr. Matilda.
Some of the quarters are constitution, they have to.
They have to.
Well, and also, it helps us keep our budget from rising every year, correct? I mean, that's no sort of...
A lot of them are for extracurricular activities, so that, it does help sports or like student council or things like that, so...
And the other thing I ask, short of the grant process, is there some in between where there's larger entities or groups that might also be an opportunity to solicit some addition? We might try to span out a bit beyond our area.
Most of that solicitation center in your book. They solicit a lot of the bigger companies and groups. Now, remember too, with the sports ads, there's a wide variety of companies that place ads in the football programs. That's where most of them, the football one is the one that takes in the most.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Do you have other participants?
We have to vote.
Scott's gone.
There's two more on the other side. Oh, is there two more?
Yeah, that's what I saw.
Okay. Oh, yeah, the middle school cheerleader and the junior class activity budget too, we need to approve.
Sorry, we already made a motion.
Sorry.
We'll let it sit. No more discussion, can we call the roll?
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings.
Yes. Was there any public participation? All three, have you all three waived your interest publicly participating? Okay. Now, let's move on to old business.
As soon as you report, I'll go to new business. I'll start with A, one through seven, as a board motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion? The employment Terry May was approved in the last meeting for the remainder of this year, and then their contracts are up, so we're going on. Once again, that's an unadition that was Asher Lawrence's position.
Question, as far as the Cook position.
Okay.
Are these all, these are all renewals?
Yes, what happened was we hired Rooster Room, was it?
Secretary.
With the secretary, and she was six and a half.
Her position was taken over by Joe Morris.
That's number three, and then Joe Lance's position by Karen Green, number four, and then the employment of Shep Morrow as the oncoming physician.
Okay, so are all Cook positions filled then?
Now, they're all filled.
Okay, we're done then.
Okay. And I will say that they're quite an interview process. I know that Russ and Babet, Babet works for nutrition, Russ is a supervisor in interviews. They interviewed, I don't know, we...
We've got, we had twenty-five candidates.
How many, how many cases did we have?
Yeah, about fifty, yeah.
About fifty.
Wow!
For three hours, Josh?
For three, for three, yeah.
Wow!
Yeah, they did a lot of interviewing and...
I'm sorry, you said skipping a lot of mons, a lot of single mons.
So, that's all the discussion, I have any questions?
No. So, that's A through C?
That's A, one through seven.
We have to do B and C.
That's your decision, yeah.
We need a motion. Motion was called.
We have Mike and John.
I did, I was second. Well, I was trying to just keep track of A, B, or C. Can we call roll?
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder. Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings.
Yes. Do you want to do B and C together?
Yes, yeah. Mr. Hendricks, if I have some discussion on duty by itself, but it's something I, you know, I need to do, because I've already time. The... Okay, B and C and, let's, B and C together? I have a roll motion.
Second. Anybody with discussion, questions? Is it all straightforward?
Yeah, Karen, Karen, over there. We'll call, please, Karen.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings.
Yes. Motion on D?
You, you have been a motion on D. I actually, it'd be all the way D through.
Okay, I can look for it. Motion on D through F, and then RB can kind of walk through it after the motion.
Motion.
Every year I get confused on how this works with...
How does it...
It's a second. It just, this confuses me. Transportation contract, contractor, Hurley Christian, Cardinal Lee, St. Paul's. How does that work again? The state pays us and then we pay them, or is that...
We actually pay them in advance and then we file a T-2 in the summer and we get the money back when we file a T-2.
Is it a complete even whitewash, or do we...
Yeah, it's, it's no cost to us, it's in and out.
Okay, but we're not, we're sending out the amount of work, of cost for us to bus that student a year.
Yes.
Not the cost to taking the student all the way to the Cardinal Lee.
Correct.
But whatever money we would get for busing them, we're just gonna give it to Cardinal Lee instead of us paying them?
Per student, right, per student.
Yeah, per student.
I just want to know how it's calculated. The destination calculation, or the...
There's a set amount by the state.
Set amount.
And the minimum amount is usually what we give the parent to transport the student, because if not, we would have to transport ourselves, and it's much easier just to give the parent the money to transport.
It's a plow break.
It's a, yeah, plow break.
The open enrollment, the lunch prices, which I believe were talked about at several board meetings ago, and once again, Mr. Duke is gonna take credit as well, as soon as he does a great job, or Mrs. Barry to Washington DC.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I didn't see the list of open enrollment, in and outs.
We, you just put it in here? I know we got two, there was one or two, I signed something late this afternoon, so it's covered more.
It's still changing.
It's eleven D, okay, I'm at eleven D.
Has the CECL gone our favor yet?
No.
Now, last year was the closest, it was one twelve to ninety-eight.
Yeah.
As close as we've been. When we first started looking, when I first started at least, and Kurt was big on this, and we were talking about, we were forty to forty-five, it was fifty now. We haven't seen that, we're not quite there. We're twenty-eight.
Well, bringing units in has helped a lot.
Yes.
That's good, because then it depends if it's in the right direction. You know, if a couple years ago, you're fifty down, and you can keep it in the teens or the single digits, even better. Then we're moving in the right way.
We can't get to eleven D three because eleven D two is so long.
And that could change, right?
Oh, it's, it already changed.
I know, I choose.
All depends on the phone, huh?
My question, do we need to, it's too late now for this issue. Do we need to start building a marketing campaign, sell these on here?
We did a couple years, and I think it worked well, we did commercials, and we talked about making phone calls, and I think we should fall off the fad. But yeah, I definitely do think that we should continue, get back to that.
Well, I hate to start it and get back to it. I hate to go on RB's thing, but you know, the district has changed. Unfortunately, we're one of the fortunate districts that don't have to deal with the red around us every day, that we're the black and not the red. But once again, RB mentioned, and Babet, who's a local Leitoni, he could come in here and he works for TV27. This year, Jackson Milton went into TV27, and said, "We want a TV campaign like Leitoni did with you." So, I don't know if you saw, I think it was right around Easter, Jackson Milton hit for two months with a TV campaign that was a direct correlation of our campaign from, well, that's two years ago, at least.
Three, two, three years ago.
So, I mean, that's sort of cool, being ahead of the curve. I'm not revisiting it, we could redo it.
How is that, instead of, instead of there's this pair of gangly brothers trying to advertise vegetables? You could probably get some real stellar students out there trying to sell the same vegetables and wearing Leitoni shirts.
You could do that, that would be good.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that's your...
Spucker's gone, though, he would've been tall enough.
Very good. Alright, no, I'm just, I'm just curious about trying to set up a plan to really pull more in with some marketing skills, so...
Right, and I know that Kurt was a real opponent and leader in that a couple years back, and maybe something that we need to sit down and really conscious, be conscious about.
Only me, you're the first party. Okay, are we good then on, we need to vote?
Yes.
We'll call, please.
Mr. Ryder.
Yes.
Mr. Eastick.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. Rowley.
Yes.
Mr. Jennings.
Yes.
Oh, missed you, but you're correct, Jen.
President, I do, Jen.
Okay, superintendent's report, real quick. And anything at first, I told Kevin it was a short meeting, so I tried to find something quick to do. Just wanted to say, I got to go to the VFW last night in Washingtonville for Meet the Bears, and I know Sherrod was there, Mr. Eastick was there.
There's a ton of people there.
And it was, that's what I want to say, it was unbelievable. I mean, Mike touched on it, and I want to just reiterate what he said, that the passion and enthusiasm is just overwhelming. You went there, you were parking like it was the, you were parked way down. Yeah, and it was just an amazing time, and people didn't want to leave. I tell you what, we sat down, people didn't want to leave, and you summed up with, I wish I would, I hope Kevin wrote down, like you read, what you said was exactly right. It was just great. And the VFW paid for all of that. I figure it was like $450 hot dogs, the chips, the soda, the drink, the water.
And their workers did it too, we didn't have to clean up.
We didn't do anything clean up, they put up PA, we're there so long, they're taking it down, we're still there talking to them. And I just can't say thank you enough.
Well, we send in another thing.
Jennifer's, or Sherrod's working on that, that's awesome.
Yeah, John asked us to, on Mac product.
Wait, this was in the bonfire, was yours?
No, this was Meet the Bears. And we're working on that.
We're on the bonfire, dude.
I'm trying to get a mic for the bonfire too, yes. Because that sometimes you can only hear if you're right next to the speakers. But thanks to the VFW, the Washingtonville VFW. We started off the school year with two excellent teacher and service days, and we're excited about Monday for the first, when students arrive for their first day of school. It's Monday, Mr. Eastick. We're just sleeping in. We have to talk, we're on the faculty again. And we're gonna reconvene the safety committee hopefully in September when things die down. But we placed, we remember, we talked about that already in the front of board meeting, the exterior windows, and larger numbers of the doors. But we also are in the process of upgrading our cameras, as well as adding some keyless entry doors to the interior, so that we can lock down the elementary. Because sometimes when the high school leaves and they float down this way, or someone could float down this way, if we put a fob on that door, at that time, we can lock it, and parents will have to check in, make sure they check in. Just some more security measures. But as we talk about that, we kind of put on the back burner, our front door attendance last year. It was, we talked about, we had two halftime positions, and I think it was costing the district about $15,000, the way we had it set up. And it's just something to kind of put on the back burner because of safety grants, the fact of the, they talked about levies for security, what direction you want to go. We had a great presentation with Dan Valentine and John Saldana here for one of the in-service. They talked about hours training, informed our staff what it was, and to see if, you know, we want to tweak our lockdown procedure. But, you know, it's something that we could even discuss. I know that this, you know, may not be the time and place, how we want to do this. But the other thing I have for discussion is in the parking lot in front of the school, in the parking in front of the school. We talked briefly at other board meetings about signs, it's hard to get safety vehicles up that lane when you're parked all the way down the lane.
I complained about that in day one.
So, we did have a sign made up, and I was gonna bring it to show to you, and they would say, "No parking lot is will be fined and towed," and they would be down the way down the lane, and that would give us the opportunity to do that, to tow, for private purposes. So, that's all I have.
What's all legal? Any discussion? Yeah, I'm gonna start with Michael, since he's...
I'm gonna be... Two-fold question. The $15,000, I know before with some emails or phone calls, we talked about perhaps where we could be creative and try to come up with that money. And probably the second bigger question is, has there been any news from the state in the last thirty, sixty days of funding for 2014?
Well, they have, they passed a safety bill, but it's one-time money. So, you could...
We like one-time money.
Yeah, one-time money's good.
You could put that in, well, and it's first come, first served.
So, we should do it now? Well, it's September, it's coming out.
How much are we talking for one-time Leitoni?
This, there's no limit, I don't think.
Yeah.
To be spent on what?
It has to be on safety upgrades to the school.
Cameras, three new school buses, that's safety.
No, so let me ask you, one-time money, but can you structure a one-time plan to hire a person upfront, they get three years' worth of pay, and they're in the position, or...
See, I haven't looked at the actual details of the bill when it comes to salaries. So, that's something we're gonna have to check into.
Maybe release the money and how to apply, I think, in September.
Because I want to work in the rules as best we can to maximize it.
Well, the nice thing is the senator from Kansasville is the one that has the bill. So, and I've spoke with him once about it.
We should establish about...
Shimonie, yeah, so we can talk to him about it, too.
Because we talked about that from game, for a year and a half ago. What are you having?
Well, we've been working that for you.
Where are we at?
What are we, yeah.
It's been the act, we've been... Where are we at with the collective, five of us, on posting a person there all the time during school year?
Well, we paid for the safety cam on it right now, and I mean, that's the question, is where are we getting the money? You know, if we could be from there, that's great.
Like I said, I've got September, the guidelines and the procedures.
For the next meeting, then?
I should.
So, we should, but next meeting, if it's, if it's something, okay. Is there other things that we could buy with that money? Should we be getting ready for it? We have a month, I mean, could, you know, how about extended cameras? I mean, like they said, a gate on the front, I mean...
There's a lot of possibilities.
A lot of possibilities. And could you, I mean, this sounds crazy, but, I mean, could you possibly do something to get like a gator for the school, so you would have like not only Ross, or if there was someone in public safety, or someone in the front door that could go around the building, I mean, you know, how? You have a gator, do we have another gator? I have a one-time, it's one-time mine.
I've never stopped the rulings, what do you mean a gator?
Yeah, I'm fitting the little carts.
Oh, you need a John Doe gator?
It's, yeah, it's John Doe.
It's not like one of the...
I'm thinking of gates, no gates, but are there any other things where you can like lock down half the school with an automatic lockdown of the facility?
Like the locks, locks to go into, like...
Or build a safe room, or if there's money that's available, I want to know what options we have. Take them all downstairs, the basement, lock down that basement, that useless...
Well, I mean, there is, it's funny, there was a thing on the news, and I think they're out of Acton or Camden, they specialize in bulletproofing schools. It was just on the news, and that's what, everything, they can bulletproof everything. Windows, you know, mirrors, you know, whatever you want bulletproofed, they can, doors, basement block, I mean, you know, they, they have still sheets that you could put in. I don't, and, and curiosity is, when you get extensive of that, does that affect the fire guidelines?
Yeah, I remember too, that you have to remember that the, and we haven't made a decision yet, with the Alice Train, part of that is to get out of them. Not, not, not stay in the sitting duck, you know, break the window, do things, so, you know.
We need a nice workshop.
Yeah, and you know, and like I said, Chief and Danny did a great job in presentation against the staff, I can bring them in for a workshop.
Was he getting excited about something like this?
You know, everybody I talked to said it was the best two-minute service days that we've had in a long time, they're actually a couple of sets since they've been here.
Really?
And they did a good job. Excited is, there's some apprehension, and I can see why, because you're the first line of defense, you know, and you put your students there.
A little nervousness.
Yeah, a little nervous, and I, but all we did was introduce, say, hey, you know, we work as a team, we're gonna introduce what's out there. This is the, this is the new.
The old way was to hunker down, and that also ways to exit the building, so there's.
Well, like, like if we're in the building here, and there's a shooter, instead of saying code blue, and say, tell everybody what's going on? There's a shooter, and you're in room two eleven, can you lock this, and get all these, these students out of here, rather than come down the hall?
And that's sort of one of the things we talked about when we were originally doing, you know, upping the security after the problem over the holidays, is the door lock. Because if you had, like, the way your doors are throughout the whole building, if you had a door lock on the bottom of the door either way, you could prevent the door from opening, and it would be very cost efficient. It would be a simple, cost efficient thing. To either lock, you know, if, say if the shooter was in a room, if you wanted to lock him in that room, like you said, so everyone else could get out, well, there's no way your arms could go down there and move that lock, you know, or vice versa. If he's outside, at least this way you could go, you know, fire yourself a minute, so everyone gets out of the building. And I would be some.
I'm steering towards intervention.
Well, I mean, if, if there's, I mean, you could figure out, two hundred, three hundred doors, times how many ever locks, petition for that too. You know, and at least Russ could have it installed that it's convenient, you know, a couple here, a couple there.
No, that's why it's intriguing when she says, there's no limit.
Yeah, right, I mean.
Just list, list down some dreams, and then get what we can get.
But if it's first come, first served, and we only have a month for us to all to throw some emails around with each other and throw some ideas out, because I would imagine, unless the school board's sleeping, they're gonna, you know, this will be gone by Halloween.
Yeah, by that time.
By the inner cities.
Pardon, for the village.
Alright.
Okay, I don't have anything, you want to go around the table?
And the, let's go, well, that was the start of the discussion with Michael. Mr. Eastick?
I had the opportunity to, and this is just kind of overseeing kids, I had the opportunity to watch my daughter perform in, I said, tryouts. Nine, three or four tryouts. And it was, I had no contact with her, I could observe, but I had no contact with her. It's a very eye-opening experience, if you do it with an open mind. And whatever your child does, or a child does, whether it be music, recitals, or something like that, I think it's always good to put them under a little bit of that pressure to perform. Because I saw some things that were very good, I saw some things that were not very bad, but, you know, negative. I guess my point is, a lot of us don't put ourselves, or maybe even our siblings, or our children in those positions because fear of failure. But failure to prepare is preparing to fail in life later on. And it was just, I guess the advice is, put your kids out there and make them, and let them perform, because they will. And you know where you, and you know where you're staying. What's that?
You can learn from failure.
You can learn, right, from small little mistakes, but you put them out there, and then they, then you know what you need to work on, whether it's in math, or reading, or any subject of school, or just, it was a real eye-opening experience.
No, just to keep in mind, you and Stephen are engaged, so there's a self-face to put in. Self-face, sales?
Self-face.
Thank you. Putting your kid out there, you guys are their support when it fall.
Right.
We need to make sure that all the parents in the community not only do that, but they're there to support, failures do occur.
It's a pretty humbling experience, and it's a neat experience, I mean, you can't, you don't, you can't consider yourself the best unless you play the best. And learn a lot.
That's true.
That's my thought.
The deepest philosophical comments I've heard you say since about fourth or fifth. Tom?
I'd just like to remind, this Saturday, seven o'clock, we are reigniting the Tony versus Plumlee football alumni game.
You playing?
Old boy.
I'm not a alumni, I'm a.
It's Saturday though.
It's Saturday.
Wow. How long has that been going?
It's been gone ten, twelve years.
Flat or tack?
No.
Tack.
Proud enough.
Thank God, I'm from New Jersey.
They put bats on?
Yeah. We have the oldest one playing.
They put bats on, that's awesome.
In Danny Uido. Danny said he wants to touch the ball at least twice. So I said, look, yeah, it's always good. But where's the toe at this year?
Where's it gonna be, John?
The toe, my ticket here.
It's here.
So how many EMS?
One for each talent shift.
No, we don't have this home tip this year.
He's, he's done.
He wouldn't.
He's, he's done, no, he, he would never survive.
Well, Rich, your first chance to give us a little roundtable?
I'd just like to say, thank you for the opportunity, and look forward to working with a great group of guys and women.
Well, it's one month at a time. Congratulations. Welcome, welcome to nowhere, so. And I've got, no, Rich, please. Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second?[1782.34]